Then we will go ahead and start the meeting. And would you take the call, Jimmy?
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Here. Mr. Canardi?
Here.
Dr. Schulman?
Here.
Ms. Gorst?
Here.
Mrs. Steiner?
Here.
Mr. Yekitis?
Here.
Mr. Neave?
Here.
Okay, then we will go on to the Pledge of Allegiance and...
Have we got to turn our mics?
No.
No. We're not...
So, Mike Tudor, would you lead us in the pledge? Mike Tudor. Just start. You got called on. Just start the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, on the United States of America, and in your Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mike. Good job, Mike. Good job.
I should have given you some warning, Mike. I apologize for that. Okay. Then we will go on to approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held on November 9th of 2022. What is your desire?
Move to approve.
Second. Second, by Sam Steiner. Any questions, comments? Go ahead and take the call.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neave?
Abstain.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes. And then approval of the minutes from the special meeting held on November 30th of 2022.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the call.
Dr. Schulman?
Abstain.
Ms. Gorst?
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Abstain.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neave?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
And approval of accounts for the month of November.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Then we'll go ahead and take the call.
Ms. Gorst?
We're approving the accounts for November.
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner?
Yes.
Mr. Yekitis?
Yes.
Mr. Neave?
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan?
Yes.
Mr. Canardi?
Yes.
Dr. Schulman?
Yes.
Any district recognitions?
No, we have one lined up, but we're postponing because of the weather, I believe, Mr. Delaney. We're going to try to come back in January for state qualifiers from the SWN cross-country team. So, we'll be back with that one soon. Thank you.
Thank you. And any communications from the public?
None.
That I've received. Okay. Then we will move on to the announcements. Okay. Then we have special guest note regarding our facility planning committee report, and I will turn it over to you.
Yeah, I'll just say a few additional things, then maybe Ryan, if you could come up to the table and chair right here. The school district has, for a number of months now, had a long-range facility study going on with a facility committee made up of members of our administrative team, a couple of board members, Dan Eave and Mark Canardi are on the committee. And I can see from the audience that we have five of our official community members that have served on that committee are here this evening as well. At the tail end of that process, in working with Bray Architects, Ryan Sands, who we've asked to come up to the table here, is one of the representatives from Bray Architects that have been a part of that long-range facility planning as well. And he, along with Rob DeMees, who we have remote, he signed up and signed in and on screen behind me and Francis right now, is here this evening on behalf of School Perceptions. The last step in this process involved the school district running a community survey that was facilitated through School Perceptions. That survey culminated at the end of November, and we have some results tabulated from that. And a part of our special report out this evening is a report that Rob is going to be putting on for us on behalf of School Perceptions regarding the results of that community survey. And from there, we're going to turn to an update on our facility planning in general that Ryan will be a part of. If needed, Ryan may pitch in a little bit, but I think the first portion of the report that we have today specifically about the community survey results is going to be added up by Rob. So I think with that, Rob, I will turn it over to you if there are any additional introductions you would like to provide. That's great. Otherwise, we'll have you jump into your report.
Is my screen viewable?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, we see you.
Okay.
Yeah.
You should be looking at something with your name on it. Is that right? Okay, great. Let's launch in. So, as I scroll through here, you're going to see a couple of different slide colors this evening, and they'll be over on the right-hand side. So I just want to briefly review what those are so you kind of know how the reports are divided up. Your background information, excuse me, are colored in blue. Blue slides, we won't spend a ton of time on because there's nothing new on those slides. They're exactly the same information that was in your survey. We do a lot of copying and pasting. It's probably pretty fresh in your minds now, but it is helpful, you know, say, a couple of weeks or a couple of months down the road when you're trying to remember exactly the way you described something, or you're scratching your head and thinking, how did we word that question again? Everything will be right here so that you don't have to worry about digging up an old copy of the survey that's probably long since been recycled off your counter. The kind of yellowish color here is survey or respondent information. So that is more so survey information in general, so timeline, number of respondents, things like that. We'll spend the most time this evening on green slides. Those are your results and analysis. And then certainly at the end, our gray slides is when I'll leave time to wrap up in questions. Just a reminder of who we are. Again, my name is Rob DeMees. I serve as the research director at School Perceptions. I was at a committee meeting a couple of months back, so I can recognize some of your faces. But if you haven't yet met me, again, my name is Rob. Our mission at School Perceptions has never once changed now in the 20-plus years that we've been in business. It's to help educational leaders, just like yourselves, gather, organize, and use data to make strategic decisions. We've done over 10,000 of these surveys, and we've helped north of 900 districts do exactly what you have been doing, what you're doing tonight, and what you'll be doing over the next few weeks and months, which are the strategic planning and referendum planning processes. Just a reminder of the process. So the way we do our surveys is households within the district are mailed a paper survey, and then respondents could fill out the paper survey, and they can return it directly back to us at School Perceptions. There was a business reply envelope kind of tucked in the middle between the staples. In the name of confidentiality, those came directly back to us. Or, as you may have seen when you took the survey yourself, there was a one-time-use online code printed on the front page. And that's a really important point here, which is why we underlined it. Once you hit submit or finish, as you probably saw, that code goes away. You are unable to take the survey again because we don't want anybody to have the opportunity to skew your results. Now, certainly, if somebody lost their code or there was another adult in the household who needed to take the survey, we did provide the district with some extra codes. But the point is, we wanted everybody's voice to have the opportunity to be heard, so that way, nobody's voice was louder than anybody else's voice. So what did that turn into? Well, your survey deadline, excuse me, finished up a couple of weeks back. It was November 30th for 1,516 total respondents. And that's well above what I would want to see in a district the size of Marshfield. Once you hit about 500, 600, 700 respondents, the data really quiets down. As you can imagine, over the first 100, 200, you know, some people are very supportive of what you're doing. Some people are very unsupportive of what you're doing, so the data can kind of bounce around quite a bit. But once you get past that threshold, in fact, as an example, over the last... Well, I put together an initial report about a week and a half ago, and then I wanted a fresh one for you tonight. So we entered about another 100 surveys or so, and some of your data changed by a tenth of a percentage point, sometimes two tenths of a percentage point, which means very, very little. So as your survey went on, you know, you could leave it open for another couple of weeks. I would be very surprised if the data changed at all because you're well past the threshold that I would feel comfortable with. The other reason I say that I'm comfortable here is, just so you understand our track record or what we're looking for, our results in the midterm elections, our success rate, our accuracy in making predictions, was 93.3% in Wisconsin. We tested 45 questions, and we were right on 42 of them. Now bear in mind, success for us is a correct prediction. So when we say a referendum is going to pass, and it does, that is a success. Or when we predict a referendum is going to fail, and it ultimately is declined by the voters, that is also a success for us. We want to make accurate predictions for you. And over the last, you know, say, I think, four, five to six years, we're at about 94.5% accuracy. And the good thing about a district the size of Marshfield as well is you have quite a few respondents, and so your margin of error gets tighter and tighter as well. You're looking at about plus or minus 2.5%. The next thing we did in the demographics section of your survey is asked, what is your age? Now, the first place my eyes go here is your 65-plus group. And the reason I look there first is kind of by definition, they're one of your most disconnected parts of your school community because they're most likely to be retired. And it's kind of a been there, done that in terms of their kids. They may not, you know, be getting communications directly from school if they're no longer raising a child in school. And most of the time, they're going to be reached through school communications that are mailed directly to them. That being said, though, 65-plus have near-perfect attendance at elections. They will be there. They will let you know what they think, and so therefore, I want to know what they think. Within your school district's boundaries, so not just Marshfield itself, but all of the municipalities that feed into your district, the number, or the proportion, rather, of respondents that are 65-plus is 22.7%. That's the number of people in your community that are 65-plus. Within your survey, 28% of your respondents were 65-plus. And that's good in our world. We want to see overrepresentation there simply because we know that they're going to be a good deal, or a good proportion of the ultimate voting pool. And we have to know what they think. We do, and that's good. The other thing that I, or that we asked, rather, is, is your primary residence in the school district of Marshfield? 94% said yes. Now, a very good question here, a very valid question, might be, why do you send this to people who don't live here? And it's a good question. There are two reasons for that. One, there's no requirement for your staff members to live within the district's boundaries. They could very well live elsewhere and commute into the district, but they have an email address on file. So they're going to get the district, they're going to get the survey because they are staff. Any parent who chooses to open and enroll their child into the district, by definition, doesn't live there, or they wouldn't need to open and enroll in, but they have a parent email address on file, so they also get the survey. The last group is if I own a property within the district, but I don't necessarily live there. I may have a mailbox, and therefore, I'm going to get the survey that way as well. But the takeaway point here is, when we move forward with many of your analyses, we are going to focus specifically on the 94% of people who said yes because they are the ones that have the privilege of controlling an election within your district's boundaries. Everybody else may be influential, but they can't vote there, and we need to focus on the people who can vote. I did run this slide past Ryan just to make sure it's kind of what he was expecting, and it sounds like this is probably pretty natural in terms of where you'd expect your population centers and respondents to come from. Overwhelmingly, most of your respondents lived in the city of Marshfield, but you actually had representation from every one of your municipalities that feed into the district. Not too many in Green Valley and Cameron and Lynn, but it does sound like not too many of your folks live within those boundaries that feed, or municipalities that feed into your district. And you did have a few coming from McMillan and Hewitt and Lincoln as well. But for the most part, a little under 2/3 of your respondents live in the city of Marshfield itself. The next slide, we have two pie charts that we purposely put next to one another. These ask, are you an employee of the district? Or are you a parent of a child currently enrolled in one of our schools? Now, what I'll look for here is, I want to make sure that parents and... Excuse me, that employees and parents are taking the survey, but I don't want them to be the only people taking the survey. Because in general, because they're so tightly connected to the school community, they tend to be a bit more supportive. So if they were the only people taking your survey, it would skew your numbers up. And I don't want that to happen. I want you to give good, I want you to get good, accurate data. And most people in the community are non-parent, non-staff. So you cleared that bar handily. We are getting good representation from non-parents and non-staff here as well. Lastly, in the demographics section, a question that was a little bit different but probably valuable as you make your plans moving forward. We asked, how do you like to receive school or district information? And note that this wasn't mark all that applied, so it doesn't add up to 100% because I could certainly check more than one. But note the wording of the question. This is a preference question. It does not say, how do you receive school or district information? Because in theory, you can be communicating with me in a way that I don't want to be communicated with. You know, you're doing X, and I want you to do Y. So this is kind of in a perfect world. How would you like to get our information in your hands? It's ordered in descending order by non-parents, non-staff. They are in purple, and they primarily want to get information from you from school and district newsletters and from the Hub City Times. Your parents are a bit more balanced. They're in kind of that teal color. They want to get information via email, school and district newsletters, the website, and then to a slightly lesser extent, phone notifications. And I always tell folks, you know, as and when you move forward with your plans, you're probably going to leave no stone unturned. You're probably going to use all of these anyhow. But it is kind of nice to know you're bang for your buck if you put something out there into the ether, is it going into a place where people want to read about us? Or is it going into a place where not that many eyeballs are seeing it? Next, we're going to turn the page to some blue slides here. So these are the ones that we'll go through a little bit more quickly because there's no data here. This is exactly what was in your survey. So a bit about the financial background. We talked a little bit about the trajectory of your mail rates over the last couple of years and how you compare it to the state and how you compare it to the Wisconsin Valley Conference, at least as of the time when your survey went out. Talked a little bit about how you're at the top of your conference at the most recent state report card when it was available. And then talked a little bit about some of the facility challenges at various buildings. So what was going on at the high school? What were the big-ticket items there that were challenging from a facility perspective? What were some of the issues at the middle school? What were some of the issues at the elementary school? And then noted that your maintenance staff does all they can to keep your facilities in good condition. But if you were going to tackle some of these issues here, the cost would be too expensive to fund out of the annual budget, and therefore, you would need to pursue a capital, or in other words, a facilities referendum. What did we learn? Well, the first question we asked then was, would you support the district pursuing a referendum to update our facilities? And here, harkening back to a point they made a few minutes ago, we're looking only at residents here. This is broken up into three constituent groups. Your staff are on the far left-hand side of each group. They're represented in gray. Now, they're very supportive, and they're also pretty influential. They are the ones that are going to get stopped at the post office. They're the ones that get stopped at the grocery store. And somebody's going to ask them, hey, you work at school. You're my second grade, you're my kid's second-grade teacher. What's going on? You tell me about the plans. I got the survey in the mail. Tell me what's going on. So they got a gear to a lot of people. But bear in mind that staff are about 1% of any given community. Influential and supportive, not that many of them. Parents are kind of in the middle, typically quite supportive because their kids are there, and they represent about 25% of any given community. That means whenever you see purple or whenever you see the label "non-parents, non-staff", put your eyes there first because about 75% of your community is going to be encapsulated there. So as I'm looking through this data here, what I'm seeing is that a majority of all three of your constituent groups, all three of your subgroups, be it staff, parents, or non-parents, non-staff, would support you pursuing a referendum to update your facilities. This is the first place, kind of the first question that is a hurdle, so to speak. Because this is kind of the permission slip question, like we like to call it. Because I can tell you, as a survey taker, I can tell you to pursue till the cows come home, and it doesn't cost me a nickel. So if you were hearing no here, then the rest of your data would kind of become a moot point. This is kind of the first hurdle to clear before you hear the rest of your data. And you heard it. You did get permission to, at least from your survey respondents, to say, yeah, tell me what's up your sleeve. You tell me what you're going to do. Tell me more about your plans. I'll tell you whether I'm going to support them or not. In terms of your non-parents, non-staff, 30% did say no, don't pursue a facilities referendum. And that's fairly typical, I would say, on any given referendum question we do, whether it's for operations or whether it's facilities. Right around a quarter, plus or minus a few percentage points of non-parents, non-staff, always say no. You're at 30%, so it's kind of right in that normal range that I would expect to see. This is always hovering around what you see here. So you're very much in the normal range there. So you had the permissions slip signed. So now people wanted to learn more about what it is that you were proposing to do. So we said, if the community supports pursuing a referendum, then we wanted to explain what it is that you would potentially do. So blue slides here, back to what was in the survey itself. We had a schematic put together by Ryan and the Bray team talking about where the work would be done in the building, primarily at the high school. We then elucidated what the plans would be in words. Talked a little bit about what would happen at the middle school with this plan. Talked a little bit about what would happen at the respective elementary school plan, and then noted the cost, total cost. Then we said, what would this do for me? Because most people are not going to make their decision off of the total number because that doesn't mean anything. You know, is that going to cost me $100? $1,000? $200? $2? It doesn't mean anything for total cost until we bring that home and say, okay, well, based on how much property you own, here's how much it's going to cost you as a taxpayer. And only at that point are people knowledgeable enough to say, yeah, okay, I'm willing to support this or not. And here we noted that because of your previous planning, you have an opportunity as a district to invest in your facilities without increasing taxes over the current level. What did we learn? Same constituent groups here. First, your staff residents, overwhelmingly, they're supportive. Over 8 in 10 said, yes, I would support this base plan. Your parents, also very supportive. 7 in 10 said they would support the base plan. And for your non-parent, non-staff residents, you did reach majority here as well. 55% of your survey takers who are non-parent, non-staff residents said they would support the base plan. So then what we did is, we looked at the same question. We looked at the same data, but we re-packaged it a little bit differently because we wanted to weight that support based on how big these groups are. So I just said that your parents are about 70% supportive, but I also mentioned that they're only about a quarter of your community. So that's why you see 0.25 in front of the parental support. Same theory over here for your non-parents, non-staff. They came in at 55% support, and they represent, again, about 3/4 of your community, which is why you see them weighted at 0.75. So at the end of the day, when we take that support and we weight the groups based on how big they are proportionally, we would predict that if this referendum were held today in the school district of Marshfield, you could expect about 58 to 59% of people supporting the base plan as it was described. But that wasn't the only thing we tested. We then looked at the middle school. There was a specific project that we looked at there. And this, too, could be done without increasing taxes over the current rate. Same groups. Staff residents, very similar support. 80% said yes to the middle school plans. 67% of parents, residents, said yes to the middle school plan. And 56% of non-parents, non-staff also said yes. So, at the end of the day, that was very similar data, so it came in very similarly. About fifty-eight to fifty-nine percent would support the middle school project as it was tested in the survey. Lastly then, with the elementary level cafeterias, talk a little bit about what would be done at those buildings. Here, it was twenty-seven dollars for every one hundred thousand dollars worth of property value. Staff residents, still quite supportive. About seventy-eight percent said yes. Fifty-six percent of parents said yes. And here you did fall below majority for the largest proportion of our community, at forty percent. So when we do that same weighting, here, we do fall below majority. Under fifty percent support the elementary level cafeteria projects, you're looking at a support of about forty-four percent or so. Lastly then, was your overall satisfaction. So we asked, how was the district doing in each of the following areas? The scale here was a little bit different. You can't get worse than one. If I said you were doing poorly in a particular area, that was weighted as a one behind the scenes. And if I said you were doing great in an area, that was weighted as a four. That's the highest four you can get. So on all of these numbers here, you can't get worse than one, and you can't get better than four. The four metrics that we tested were, one, delivering a high-quality education; two, keeping the public informed; three, managing funds appropriately; and four, building pride in the community. So first thing that I do here when I'm scanning these numbers is, I look to see if any number is above or below two and a half, since that's the middle point. All of your staff are above two and a half. In fact, they are all saying you're doing great, and some of your scores are approaching, or, excuse me, they're all above good, and some of your scores from your staff are approaching great. Again, that's really good news, because they're the ones that are going to get asked about school. Your parent and your non-parent, non-staff data is also coming in quite strong. The only number that comes in slightly below the median are from your non-parents, non-staff, very close, at a score of two point four seven, in terms of keeping the public informed. Otherwise, every other number on here is above your middle point, and some of them are very much approaching good, or even some of the, some of the numbers are approaching great. Another way to look at this data, same question, same metrics, but again packaged slightly differently, is what percentage of our respondents say we're doing a great or a good job, and what is the overall average when we pool our respondents together? So, over eight and ten, eighty-four percent of your respondents said you're doing great or good in terms of delivering a high-quality education. That's pretty sky-high. You're never going to get to a hundred percent. As much as you could try, there's always going to be somebody mad at you about something, and it might have nothing to do with your education, but they will say it is. So, you're never going to get to a hundred percent here. This, in context, is really quite high. It's not too often that we see this in the eighties, so clearly people are very proud of the education that you're offering for students. All the other numbers that you see here too are also above fifty percent. None of your metrics were below good or great in terms of the fifty percent here. In fact, another one, over seven and ten, said that you do a good job or a great job in building pride in the community. Your last overall satisfaction, I call this our "one push comes to shove" question. On a scale of zero to ten, at the end of the day, how likely would you be to recommend a district to a friend or family member? Your overall average was seven point two zero on a scale of zero to ten. So when I'm eyeballing that, first thing I do is, I look to see if you're above neutral. That's at five, and certainly you are. You're above neutral at seven point two. So certainly people are more likely to recommend you to a friend or family member than they are to not recommend you. The other thing I do here is, I just start at the top, and I work my way down and say, well, how low do I need to get until I reach a majority? And it isn't very far. So nearly one quarter of your survey respondents gave you the highest possible score that they could, at ten. If I add in another sixteen, I'm at forty percent. Add in another eighteen, I'm at fifty-eight percent. I broke the majority, and I only got down to eight. Over the last two years, that's not always very common. There have certainly been board meetings, especially over the last couple of years, where I don't reach majority until four, sometimes even three, and that's not you here. You are getting very good satisfaction from your district, and those are, you know, those are certainly things to pat yourself on the back about. Now, the other reason that I spend so much time on these slides here is, this is kind of, kind of another one of those low hurdle, I shouldn't say low hurdle, it is a hurdle to clear before you take a referendum to ballot. And the reason I say that is because if people aren't satisfied with you and the education that you're providing, they're not willing to say yes on a referendum ballot. In other words, the other way to say that is, nobody's mad at you and also agrees to raise the property taxes. That's not how it works. So you have to have some semblance of satisfaction before people are willing to make that decision in a voting booth, and certainly you cleared that hurdle as well. So, looking back, in summary then, what did we learn in this report? First, we learned that a majority of all your subgroups, i.e. staff, parents, and non-parents, non-staff, support you as a district pursuing a facilities referendum. Second, if the referendum were held today, a majority of all subgroups would likely support the ninety-nine point five million dollar base plan referendum. The one thing that's not here, at least written in text, but the other thing, I guess, I would say verbally, is, that is a pretty big psychological threshold, I think, as you can imagine, for that number, whether it's three digits or two digits here. In other words, are you above or below a hundred million dollars? And I know that, you know, that certainly you've got support for your base plan. There was some support for the middle school work as well, and I know some of the things that I say are easy for me to say and create more work for Ryan, so, sorry, Ryan, but, you know, I guess I would recommend that as and when you make these plans moving forward, there can be sticker shock. And there are psychological thresholds that you can cross, and I do think one hundred million is one of those. So as you're making your plans and you decide what you ultimately want to take to ballot, I would recommend that you stay under that, and whether, you know, something easy to understand is that base plan, but I guess moving forward, as a group here, you would have to decide what ultimately are we going to take forward on a ballot, and what is the number going to be. So, let me pause there. I realize that's a bit of fire hose drinking. I'm going to take a sip of my water, but by all means, let us know what questions you have for us at School Perceptions.
Other questions from the board?
Okay, Rob, I think everybody's saying you did a good job.
Oh, thank you, appreciate that.
Actually, I have a question. Some of the information that was presented was based on a four point nine percent interest rate, and I believe that the interest rate is, went up today, and it's probably, I think in...
So, yeah, I can talk about that a little bit further.
Yeah, it's significantly higher. And how does that impact?
Hopefully people can hear me okay then.
Thank you, Bob.
So we worked with elders as our financial advisor, and I did ask them to do some updated financial projections, and then I had a conference call check-in with Jeff Sealy as our representative. I had another check-in call with him today to review all of that in preparation for the meeting here. As I did report out with our facility planning committee, on Monday, the updated financials that he provided was, on a twenty-year note, a five point five interest rate. Now, there's a number of details with those updated reports, but I think it's important to note from the additional information that Jeff provided me today is, he did note that all of the work that they did, as they typically do, is they, they work in a lot of conservative flexibility into the numbers that are there. What he told me is that, in actuality, if they were going to a bond right now, that we would, like today, as in today, right now, would very likely, it would come in the upper four percents, is what he's telling me. I see Derek Fries, who works in the banking industry, nodding his head at the back of the room. Derek is on our committee. Jeff told me today, probably four point seven five, maybe even a little bit better than that if we were going to that right now. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, Derek, that you would share?
I agree with you. I agree with you. The way the bonds work, yes, I agree with that, ten, upper quarters.
Right.
And this, as of today, now that couldn't go up, as you said, but as of today, yeah.
You know, again, I just, I think it's important to note that is very common and typical when the financial advisors are working with school districts. They want to err on the side of being conservative and not give you a number that ends up doing poorly, you know, more poorly than what they had projected. Now, this isn't happening today. I mean, I think we understand that interest rates could very likely go up, but, you know, the general obligation bond market is a whole different animal than what people might typically think of when it comes to, like, home mortgage and things of that nature. So I guess I would ask the board to keep all of that in mind as well. You know, generally speaking, you said they like to build in a cushion of about a three-quarters, if not a full percent, into those projected numbers when they're working up financials.
Well, I have the mic, so to speak. Just two quick thank-yous. One, I really, really appreciate the opportunity to present virtually. I went out to the grocery store before and immediately fell on my bottom. It was not a, not a good indication for how my drive was going to go. So first, I really appreciate that, and two, just a shout-out quickly to Ryan, and I know Pat's not retired, but as we were developing the survey, if I had questions or we needed some information, it was, you know, it was not a matter of days when we needed things back, it was typically a matter of hours. And so their responsiveness really allowed our work to go much better, and so I appreciate the partnership of the district. I thought it went really well, and so I just, I wanted to thank you on two fronts there for the good work that we were able to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Thanks.
So with that then, we have Ryan Sands on behalf of Bray Architects that we've been working with. Just as a little bit of a setup, Ryan, I'd like to mention, and, you know, I think the segue from Rob's presentation to Ryan's presentation, I think you set it up well in detailing that there is, there can be that psychological threshold when it comes to numbers. That's something that our administrative team and the conversation, the most recent one we had with the Facility Planning Committee that we're very cognizant of. Related to that, if the board were to decide to move forward with a referendum question, generally speaking, our recommendation is to stick to and hold to that ninety-nine five figure. At the same time, we recognize an interest in some plumbing work at the middle school, which we had some positive feedback on the survey results as well. So we have talked about looking at making some revisions to that base plan to try to get that work at the middle school, that additional work at the middle school brought in, and maybe find some areas and the other details of the plan to better accommodate that while staying at the number of ninety-nine five. Again, these are all projected numbers, and there are, we have a ways to go with sharpening our pencils and all of this, but I think part of what you're planning to present on, Ryan, is not only to give another overview of the base plan in general, but maybe talk a little bit about some of the adjustments that we've been discussing.
Yes, yeah, happy to do that. These slides will look somewhat familiar for those of you that are on the Facility Safety and Transportation Committee or the Facility Planning Committee, but the plan was to go through the, what I'll call the updated base plan recommendation in more detail and allow you to ask any questions on the specific scope that is planned to be included. So we'll start at the high school, and we broke this into two general buckets. So one for infrastructure and capital maintenance, so those are kind of building-wide improvements or replacement projects, and then the other is addition renovation. So the first slide here, you can see some of the specific things that were included in the infrastructure and capital maintenance. One was replacing the remaining single-pane windows. There aren't that many left, and some of our proposed additions will end up flooding some of those areas, but those that would remain, we plan to replace as part of a potential project. On the HVAC system side of things, your, your building and grounds maintenance team has done a phenomenal job maintaining your air handlers over the years. Some of them are original to the building and have been kept up really well. But everything gets to a point where it needs to be replaced, and you're at that point with the majority of the high school HVAC system. So our engineer went through and, you know, walked through, looked at all the air handlers and the equipment, and they helped put together the assessment budget for that portion of the project. It also included the chiller and boilers. There's some plumbing scope that your team has been gradually biting off chunks of when they can fit it into the budget, and so we plan to continue that work of replacing domestic water piping and adding water softening. And some of that would be necessary just based on some of the additions that are planned. On the electrical side of things, we look at replacing some of the old panels that you can't really find parts for anymore. With the additions and renovations that we're proposing, we would need to put in a new fire alarm system that meets current code. We would need a new generator, and we would look at replacing existing lighting with LED fixtures. And that ties in with a number of other products, including the next one of adding a sprinkler system. To do that, we would end up replacing a lot of the ceilings and stuff, piping, same thing with the water, domestic water piping replacements. So it's a good time to do all those things together when we have the ceilings down and everything's exposed. One thing that we did take off this list from prior to and leading up to the survey is installing a new clock system. That's something that you, as a district, have already tackled with other funding sources. And there's a couple of things on here, and those things that we're able to remove from the list will help us be able to absorb some of that middle school plumbing replacement along the way. Any questions on the infrastructure and capital maintenance at the high school?
Just a little quick, how does the original building?
Nineteen sixty-six, I believe.
Okay, so is nineteen sixty-six referring to the era of the windows or the number of panes?
Uh, the era.
Okay, right, thank you. I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah.
I thought that was a little way of them.
Yes. That would have been a lot of learning. Good question. Any other questions on this?
No. So, I apologize, I was kind of mumbling there, but, so when we, when we did the programming of the HVAC system, we didn't replace parts. Is that correct? We, in other words, I can't remember what year that was, when we went in to try and get rid of, you know, the spots that were colder and hotter and cut down.
Some more balance. That was probably...
Right, right.
That could have been controls.
So that was just the controls? So we still have, so what you're talking about are, these parts are still from the nineteen sixties, or?
Yeah, and quite a few. There's some from the sixties and the early nineties primarily, and then the one that would remain would be from the two thousand six edition.
When we had a Bray study in the nineties?
Yes.
And when a piece of equipment failed and had the glycol spill, and that, from what I understand, is air plastik, that needs to be taken forward.
You've added modifications over the years. You know, air conditioning was added to certain portions in the nineties, so this is a lot of the big pieces of equipment that are in your various mechanic rooms. There's thirty-two total air handlers in the building, so this would be addressing essentially thirty-one of them, more or less.
And I know this isn't a big-ticket thing, that our lighting would be eligible for focus on energy rebates and...
Yes, there would be likely a number of different aspects that would qualify for their, like, prescriptive rebate program, which is, you know, you replace a piece of equipment X with a new, more energy-efficient one, and they have a prescribed rebate that you can get or incentive. And then for the additions, we would likely enroll a project, the project in the Design Assistance Program. And so that's a separate program for new construction where they will model code minimum for energy efficiency of the building envelope, your lighting, HVAC, electrical plumbing systems, and then model the design that is produced, and then you'll get an incentive payment, a one-time incentive payment or rebate based on how much more energy efficient the new construction is compared to the code minimum.
I have a question about the rebates. So is the ninety-nine point five million including rebates, or that would be lowering the total cost?
It could be lowering the total cost.
Okay.
In the case of the Design Assistance Program, you don't get the money until the very end after construction's complete and they go through and verify what was put in. So it's something that you could plan around, you know, using towards an upgrade or something like that, but you wouldn't typically, you know, we're talking probably on the size of the additions that we're putting in, somewhere in the, like, low to mid, five figures, so maybe in like the thirty to forty thousand dollar range. So it's not going to bite off a significant chunk, but still, it's money that you don't have to do anything other than enroll the program to be eligible for, so. All right, I will jump to additions and renovations then, and the next slide has the image if we want to talk through any specifics. So there's a number of renovations in the core academic areas, as well as Student Services Edition. A significant addition renovation in Tech Ed and STEAM, including art and ag science. Expanding the Commons Cafeteria, so that was a major pain point that we talked through with the Facility Planning Committee as far as not only the space limitations, but also the logistics of needing to bring all your serving equipment out and in, from the kitchen every day. And then as part of that addition, we also relocate the administrative offices and create a new main entry with secure vestibule and everything to go along with it. There would be kind of an L-shaped fitness and weight room and pool seating, locker room, additional renovation, and I'll show that in a moment. There'd be some upgrades to the fieldhouse, including a new wood gym floor, bleachers, scoreboards, and lighting, and some, you know, equipment, crystal treatment, those types of things. And then site work that kind of goes along with all of this, so some of that is relocating and reconfiguring parking, and then looking to improve the traffic flow as much as we can as part of a potential project as well. So what that looks like then in plan is this. So anything you see in... Anything you see in orange is a proposed addition, and then the blue is renovation. What's not depicted here are those infrastructure projects that would basically touch the whole building in one form or another. So you can see, I don't know if this will actually, no, it won't work on the screen, so I'll use my mouth. So, starting kind of on the lower portion, so this is the new admin office and main entry, and then we've got the commons expansion here, and then that connects in through, so we're also trying to improve some of the traffic flow throughout the building. The fitness and weight room here, and then that wraps to the pool seating and the locker room expansions. This would also provide elevator access to make the current wrestling room accessible. So that's planned as part of the addition here. Then renovating and expanding the kitchen to create a dedicated servery. We would be also relocating Student Services, so that would be in this addition here, and then the plan is to convert the current office into a flexible, large-group space, so that could be used for a number of different academic uses by the high school throughout the day. Serve as professional development space for you as a district. And as we were talking about the planning and some of the needs in this building, this space was also a potential way to solve some of the space issues that you have at times with the size of the room that we're in, so another option for larger meetings and things like that, district-wide. We then have a number of renovations you can see kind of around the core area of the building to academics, so some classroom size upgrades here, so we're taking what are currently small, underutilized office and storage rooms between some of the classrooms and enlarging the size of these classrooms, also providing some flexibility with operable walls and transparency, expanding the size of a couple of science labs, renovating the entire art department and expanding the art department with an addition here, and also renovating and expanding the ag-science department here with some animal lab space and additional support. And then an addition renovation of the Tech Ed wing of the building, so expanded shop space and renovating a number of the existing spaces, including raising the floor in one of your current labs to expand the current metals and fabrication space, so trying to improve the traffic flow and the usability of the space as well as the supervision, because that was a concern that we heard. The area in light blue here at the library and the commons would be what we refer to as kind of a lighter renovation, so more of a finish upgrades and not changing the physical space so much, but making aesthetic improvements. And also then looking at adding a new entry for access from the bus lot along Tech Ed. And one of the goals in conversations with the Facility Planning Committee was to try to do what we can to increase the visibility of the different STEAM programs, so the Tech Ed, the ag, the art programs, because we found through working with other clients that the more that those programs are on display and the more students see all of the awesome opportunities that there are, the more participation that you get. You know, you're in a situation that many districts are, where when Tech Ed was built, it's kind of at the back of the building, down a hallway, where if you don't take any of those classes, you may not even know that some of those, you know, exciting shop spaces exist, and therefore may not think to even enroll. So we're hoping to help that through this project.
So the, on the backside, where we have the new construction, we still have space for the driveway and that, that just field and all that.
That's a great segue. So here, I'll, it's a slight delay here, but there we go. So the site plan here, so, yeah, so we would, we would lose some parking along there, but would maintain a drive all the way around the building, so to answer your question there. We would lose some space in this current staff lot as well with the additions, and so you can see we're kind of tracking that here with a net loss of thirteen and twenty-six spaces, but then through reconfiguring and expanding the front parking lot, we're gaining seventy-two, and so the simple math for this chart over here is that we're projecting right now a gain of plus or minus thirty-three spaces. I'll throw out the caveat that this is architects laying out parking. When our civil engineers come in and lay this out, we'll probably lose a few spots as they work out the exact turn radiuses that you need for buses and everything, but we're projecting, and the goal that was established with the district and the planning committee was to not lose spaces overall. So we feel like we can achieve that with the current site plan. Another piece, and we'll need to work with the city on this if the project moves forward, but we're looking at adjusting where the drives are to try to separate them a little more, as well as align with some of the cross streets along backer to hopefully improve the traffic flow, because we know there's a lot of congestion in this area in the morning between the high school and Madison. Any questions on the high school scope?
I assume this will include renumbering of the classrooms so that it is logical?
That is certainly...
But I just find, yeah, as a newer person coming into the district, ten years ago, it was kind of funny to wander around and try to figure out what classrooms were, because the numbering didn't go like, you know, one to eight.
It was... It's a... It's a, it's a good question and it's a conversation that we have on pretty much every project because regardless of what you decide to do as far as if you want to renumber everything or just renumber the rooms that we are affecting with the potential renovations and additions, we'll need to coordinate because we have to number the rooms on our drawings so that the contractors know where to go and do the work. Our ideal situation is that we're using the same numbers that you will in the long run because then when panels are labeled and HVAC equipment is labeled, it matches so that when your staff, you know, your working staff come back, they aren't having to reference drawings to make the connection between the actual room numbers and what was on our plan. So it's certainly a conversation we have.
It just makes it more friendly, it would make it more friendly, visitor-friendly, if that was in the plan.
Yeah, and if that's a need, this would definitely be the time to do it with this amount of investment in new renovated space.
So we haven't had any conversations yet with the city engineer about the flow of traffic along Becker there?
Correct. I know the district has in the past at times, but we would, you know, we want to meet with them.
Point in time that happens because sometimes in the past, when we've done that, like when we put in the circle drive, in talking to the city engineer, he, we ended up with a different plan than what we thought we were going to do.
Yeah, and that is an excellent point. We would absolutely meet with the city. There'd be a lot of coordination with various departments and different supplemental processes and things that we would need to go through. Your question also reminded me to point out that both the floor plan and the site plan are conceptual. So, you know, we take the, the design work at this phase to a point where we are confident that we're meeting kind of the programmatic needs that have been identified and the building needs, and to a point where we can put a budget together. But if a project moves forward, we will kind of start from square one, so to speak, and we'll reevaluate everything. The other piece is we got some feedback from staff to help inform the process, and we had people on the committee to help inform the process. But we would absolutely engage more of the staff in specific user group conversations around all the different areas that would be affected to make sure that the final design reflects their input and meets the needs of Marshfield to the greatest extent possible. So it could look very different than the end that it does now, and it will. I can almost guarantee that. And so part of that would be those conversations with the city and any adjustments to the proposed site plan. But we want to, we want to lay it out the way that we did to the point that we did to make sure that we feel we can accommodate the parking that we need and all of those types of things.
Just the pricing part of it, and...
Yeah.
If everything moves forward, then it gets past the conceptual one.
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
How much of this entire project? I can see where my question is going to fall into place in a few areas, but how much of the ninety-nine mil is going to address student, staff, and public safety?
I don't know that I have a specific number for you there because there's a lot of aspects that go...
I guess I'm not asking for a specific number, but are there some areas that you would classify in this improvement plan as areas that are directly related to safety?
The buyer, sprinkler system, the services.
Yeah, absolutely. Sprinkler system, see that?
New entry, new entry with the...
Okay, just want to make sure that that aspect overall is taken into consideration during this plan.
Yes.
If there may be some other trade-offs or additions or something that maybe we forgot that are student safety-related that have been discussed in the past, that maybe we've forgotten about or left out. I'm not part of the committee, so I don't have any, any input into the discussion or any idea as to what took place in all of the discussion with facility. I see some of the people who are here and I trust them. I know there are great people in the community, but it's just a concern that I have, that safety for students, staff, and the public in general. Obviously, the drive-in area, reconstructing there certainly could help safety in that Madison School blockade area. But just a point I want to make, I guess...
And I don't want to get too far ahead, but we're going to be getting in a minute to some base plan components at the elementary. Relocating the main office at Grant School, which is currently not, it's our only elementary building that the office is not at. The secure entry is an example of a safety measure as well, we'll get into here shortly.
About sex, yes.
I guess my area of memory and expertise relies mostly upon middle school and high school because those are areas that I taught at, so.
Yeah, it's a, it's a great point, and it's a lens through which we think about when we're designing everything. There's, you know, specific components like Dan referenced, relocating the office and creating a new main entry. So there's a single point of entry as opposed to, you know, the multiple. Now, from the standpoint of how it's laid out and some of the details with regards to opportunities for compartmentalization, whether it be to separate like night, weekend use from academic day use, or also compartmentalization from the standpoint of controlling access during the school day. That's something that we would work through within the design. And then there's also some factors related to, I would say, rightsizing of spaces and providing adequate room for specifically in the Tech Ed area, some of those activities, so that you can have, you know, the safety clearances and room for more kids to have access to equipment and be doing projects at the same time. So I think there are certainly multiple layers to that. And it's, it's definitely, I think, prevalent throughout the work.
Yeah, my question is putting the cart before the horse because I know eventually we're going to have to, I don't want to say use the word sell this to the public, but we're going to have to at least present this to the public. And I would hope that in our information or everything that we put out to people, anything that we could include that shows that a particular investment or improvement also has, you know, safety leanings or ideas that this is helpful along those lines as opposed to just mechanically, this is a bigger room that's going to help the size of classes and, you know, meeting spaces and stuff like that. And how will this maybe help us out, not just educationally, but safety as well? So that's the end of my speech for today.
HVAC and...
HVAC is one, obviously, and safety and comfort, I guess.
Replacing obsolete equipment.
Well, inefficiency, yeah, we're putting in more efficient equipment.
Right.
That, that's a safety thing.
Just don't forget that word, safety, is all concerned. It's a big factor today.
That's a great point. At the middle school then, and you can see it highly on the plans there, we're planning to do some refreshes in a number of the classrooms on the lower level, second floor and third floor, replacing ceilings, new LED light fixtures and fresh coat of paint. And then, as was referenced, kind of stemming from the survey results and then the conversation with the Facility Planning Committee, on Monday, we would look to incorporate some of the plumbing replacement projects into the updated base plan. To do that, we will need to, as I think Dr. Christensen referenced before, sharpen our pencils a little bit, and we don't have all of the ways that we'll do that yet. But with the magnitude of work at the high school, I think we can certainly get to a point to balance that out and be able to absorb that within the ninety-nine and a half million if that's what the board decides is the path forward. At the elementaries then, and this was referenced briefly before, so we've got Grant Elementary broken into those same two buckets. So we plan to replace the roof and the exterior windows, add air conditioning to the spaces currently without it, which is primarily the spaces around the perimeter. So some of the center rooms that don't have exterior windows have air conditioning because of the necessary ventilation. But a lot of the perimeter spaces do not, so we plan to add that. And then do some site work to improve traffic flow for pickup and drop-off. And then from the standpoint of renovations, this is really born specifically from the lens of safety in basically flipping some programs in the building. So currently, the music room is here on the exterior of the building. And so we would look to flip the admin office to the exteriors so that we can create the same kind of secure entry sequence that you have at the other buildings here at Grant. And then we would relocate music and the other programmatic spaces to the center of the building here. And then also renovate the kitchen here to provide a little additional space. Any questions on Grant? At Lincoln, we have some infrastructure projects, replacing the water and sanitary piping. This is born out of just the age of the piping in the original portions of the building. So you've had some issues with it, and so this is an opportunity to replace the older piping that's starting to degrade and at times leak and create other issues. And then similar to Grant, add air conditioning to the remaining spaces that don't currently have it. At Madison, we're looking to expand the east parking lot and then add a sidewalk along the north side of the site connecting from the public side, sidewalk to the softball field. So that's another project that is tied in with safety as far as not relying on people walking through the parking lot where you're mixing with traffic and providing a path outside of the parking lot. At Masonville, we would look to replace the roof there as well. So, you know, you've probably dealt with this before, but when you look at needing to replace an entire roof, it's become a pretty substantial venture these days. And so biting off a couple of those roofs will set you up for, for the future of those buildings. And then Masonville was one where, I think, from every type of feedback that we got, so your original facility study, our staff survey and listening sessions and the conversations with the committee, the traffic flow and coming up with a solution to get traffic off of County Highway sooner and onto the property was a major point of emphasis. And so we would do that as part of the project. And then at Washington, we look to renovate and create a dedicated special education toilet room to better support the, those programs at Washington. So that's a summary of the updated base plan. One thing I should mention, so there's another project at Masonville that was originally included, and that was replacing the windows. That's something the district has since decided to, and I'm sure you're probably aware of this even more than I am, but replace those windows with other funding. So that's another piece of the budget that we can use as a way to work towards integrating the middle school plumbing project. Any other questions?
Any questions? We appreciate you being here and your sweater.
Yeah, no problem. Happy to do it. Thank you for your partnership. And thanks to the Facility Planning Committee. I know we have quite a few members today. It's a pleasure working with that group. I really appreciate all of their input that got us to this point because it really, we don't get to this point without input from your district team and from the committee members. So thank you everyone for your time.
Absolutely, and that's something I would like to speak to a little bit further as well. And as I had mentioned, we do have some representatives that have been a part of that committee. Dan and Mark and myself have been a part of that committee. We have, if you don't mind my announcing, Heather Adler is here as a, as a staff member and a parent in the community. Tara McCam, also a staff member and a parent in the community. Derek Fries, a community, a member of the business community and a parent of kids in our school district as well. We have Mike Trudeau here with us this evening, and Terry Franklin. It's important to, you know, acknowledge and point to the members of this committee because this has been a months-long process that goes back springtime of the previous school year. And we've had multiple meetings starting, I believe, in May, carrying throughout the summer. It involved making some site visits to other school districts that have done some renovation work. And the base plan that you see here is a culmination of the work of that committee. Honestly, the, the needs of the district that surfaced through those conversations go beyond what is in the base plan. The committee had input on what ultimately came to be the survey that we talked about at the beginning of this presentation. Our work on the committee also involved taking a look at the financial situation within the school district. And ultimately, the committee felt that the best approach to take here is how much facility improvement work could we do in the district while having a neutral impact on taxpayers? And that is what got us moved to that, that number of ninety-nine-five, which is and was articulated within the survey that we shared with the community. And I, I feel that the support that we had speaks volumes to the fact that people are very intrigued by the fact of being able to do a lot of facility improvement work within the district while keeping the impact nil or neutral on, on the mill rate. But I feel really obligated to make note of, there's more that all of you identified that could be done within the school district, but we're trying to be as fiscally responsible and do as much as we can while limiting the, the financial impact on, on our community in the school district as well. So with that, and as board members on the committee, I don't know if there's anything more about your experience, Dan or Mark, that you would like to add?
I think just working with Ryan and Brian Associates was a pleasure. I think that they did listen very well to us as a committee and took our comments to heart. So I was very appreciative working with you, Ryan.
Thank you.
I think all the committee had great insight and input from different aspects of how we can look at things. You being in the construction industry, I look at things different than somebody who's not in the construction industry and what they're looking at. So I think we had a great cross-section of people on the committee, and it worked really well. I think the number that we came to is where we probably need to be. And I, I'd just like to say that somebody who worked in the bidding process for construction forever is this is a number we're going to go in in. And I want to be very positive that we have a lot of bidders and we come in below estimates, which means we might go get more work done than what we're thinking. And that it's a very competitive nature at the time, so that's...
That's our line experience. Just watching the rest of the committee as we walk through and they could see and identify all the issues. I mean, same with myself. And what was, what I found was amazing was being able to get in some of the rooms that you can't get into. And looking at these air handlers, they've been there since the six, since sixty-six, and these rooms look phenomenal. If it wouldn't be for our staff taking care of that equipment, it would not have lasted this long. But it's time, it's time for a change. And then looking at, with my electrical background, being able to see them here, as I said, was obsolete. It's absolutely obsolete. It needs to be changed because if something were to happen, it would take a while to get everything back up. And we want to keep continuing with school in the process to let our students out at the end of the year and not say, ah, it looks like we're going to have to go through the summer because we were done, so. But no, I mean, just watching the rest of the committee, listening to the rest of the committee, and all the positives that come out of it is just wonderful.
We met just Monday evening, a few nights ago, to be able to give the committee members a preview of the survey results as well as talk to them about the recommendation that, that we've come to on trying to stay with a, a project that would be within that ninety-nine-five number, making some adjustments to bring the plumbing work at the middle school into it. We have general consensus on, on moving forward with that. We had a lot of, a lot of support and I would say encouragement and energy from the group. Now, I warned all of you a little bit ahead of time that inviting you here, that we might call on you to share a few thoughts that, that you have. And there may be some questions that board members have of them, but I think as a starting point, if there are some thoughts and, and about your experience or where the projects lie that, that any of you would be willing to share with, with the board before they may ask specific questions, that would be welcome. Derek, you're usually not shy to speak.
I'm usually not, no. So it's, for me, it was eye-opening. I hadn't been past probably, I hate to say this, but the Commons and/or the office at the high school ever before this started. And I have, my oldest son just graduated last year, so I didn't, I didn't have a lot of issues, right? right? So it was eye-opening of the, what needs to be done with the buildings. It does, it's time, it's time for something to happen with them to keep, to get us up to times, especially with going and doing the tours of some of the facilities that we did. We went and saw Oregon de Forest, Mont Hora was the other one, right? One of the other ones? And the Dells, right? So those, and they have all had different projects going, we saw scopes of a brand-new building, the Dells, to remodeling in Oregon and remodeling in Mont Hora. And yeah, it's, we talked about safety a lot and what we can do and things like that. So we definitely took that into account in looking at that. But yeah, it's definitely time, looking at the facilities we do have, that things do need to get upgraded and talking about Aaron. The guts of the building are 1966, 1990, whatever it is. And they're at end of life for a lot of stuff. It's got to get taken care of before it gets worse.
Mike or Terry, do either of you mind sharing?
I agree with Derek. No, it was, it's eye-opening and basically it's time. We've, mechanics have outlived their lifespan, so, and additional spaces needed on the layout. And Ray has done a very good job on identifying where things can go. And with increased attention to the, let's see, the STEM academics and the, we need that extra space, especially after reviewing what else is out there in different cities and different school districts and what can be done. And it can be done here. And why not if you want to affect a community? Just do it.
Jerry?
Well, I'm part of the generation that is in this, older generation. I have two, not that old yet. I have two grandchildren coming up to go into the, they're in the school system now at Washington and they're going to be coming, but I think it's been said multiple times now, it was eye-opening to go through that school system, but Mark hit it on the head. I was thoroughly impressed how well it's been kept up. But we were invited if we wanted to take a tour of the lunch periods. And so I took a tour, Nathan took me one day, and I went through two lunch periods. And I was shocked how crowded it is and how well it's organized, but we need the space. Every school we toured, we looked at that, how they handle the lunch periods. Tech ed is a big thing, how they handle their tech ed, and we're going to expand our tech ed department. But I think one of the biggest things, and when I got home that evening and Mike and I sat together on the bus that day to see how the new buildings are laid out and how we need to do that, because the school system is a big asset to our community and it's going to help continue to grow our community. And people are going to look at what our school system has to offer. And we can have great education, but we've got to have facilities to manage, to go along with our great education. So I appreciate the opportunity to serve on that committee.
Thank you, Terry. Heather or Tara, do you mind adding a few thoughts as well?
Well, I can say that touring it, not much has changed in the last twenty years from when I was in high school. And going down and seeing the air handlers and markers on 1967, 1968, and how they meticulously went through and made sure everything would work as best as it could. It was interesting to see that it's original and still functioning, considering I've been out of high school for 20 years. And to know that I will have three children coming up and going through and being able to receive hopefully some of that great education that we have and seeing the opportunities that they have, it's kind of exciting knowing that they, by the time they get there, it should, would hopefully be done.
I agree with Tara. And working in Washington, you only really focus on your building that you're in. And I have four kids in the district, from a senior all the way down to a second grader. So we have a long ways to go in the district yet, and it was fascinating to see the tech area. I never took any of those classes when I was at the high school. My daughter, who's a senior, does not either. So knowing how that'll benefit the future of our community, to know if we can make these improvements, to me, it looks like great hope for our future. So I really enjoyed being on it and glad I was asked to be on it because it was nice to see what we can do as a community to put forth great efforts into our school district.
Great, thank you. Do board members have any questions for any of the committee members? Dale?
Not a question, but just a general comment. I know many of you, I know some of you, and I just want to appreciate and give you my appreciation for the time spent to get involved with this activity because time is like money. It's very expensive and it's something that has to be rationed. And I appreciate the time that all of you put in to be involved in this and in our schools.
I'd like to echo that because I know it's a lot of work. Every time we've looked at a facility study, it's a lot of work goes into it. And you all reflect something I consistently see in this conservative community, fiscally conservative community, in that is setting what we think we can afford. It's not a big old wish list. It's looking at the plumbing that has to be repaired in 1966, you know, air handlers and things that do keep our kids safe, like the grand school office being relocated, et cetera. Because traditionally, even when we closed East Fremont combined, East Fremont and Masonville, we went for our square footage, we didn't go big and finish everything inside. The community did fundraising later to finish off a lot of the inside. And we, you know, time and again, had to postpone things that were on the wish list just because we tried to keep everything affordable for this community. And I see that reflected again this time. You know, when we did the athletic fields, we left off doing locker rooms and this and that. So that's been kind of a tradition. We always end up just kind of thinking about what the community can afford. And I appreciate that so much. And I think our taxpayers do.
Related to that, Frances, a little more detail that I wanted to be sure to speak through is the finance side of this, especially for people who are viewing or maybe watching the board meeting afterwards, is to, is the question I'm sure is out there, how can we do $99.5 million worth of facility improvement to not have an impact on the mill rate? Now, I handed around before the meeting started for board members, some of, we've got leftover paper copies of the community survey that was completed. If you open it up, you know, the inside, on the right side of the inner middle, you know, we did include a graphic of what the mill rate has been in recent years and projected. I think Ryan is going to try to find that and put it up on screen. That'd be perfect. Ryan, if you could do that and get that projected as I talk through a little bit what's here. Is what I'd like, especially for members of the public that are watching the presentation to understand and remind everyone of is, you know, back in 2005, the community approved a facility referendum. That referendum resulted in the construction of New Washington School, New Madison School, renovation work at Lincoln School, and some renovation work, expansion at the high school as well. You know, for a moment, I think it's important to pause to recognize how thankful and fortunate we are as a community, that the community voted yes and approved those facility upgrades almost 20 years ago because we're much better positioned today in all of that time period for those new buildings and those renovations that were approved. That referendum resulted in a 20-year note at that time that we're coming near to the tail end of as we stand here today. This particular slide depicts the impact on our mill rate from that 20-year note. So specifically to the left of the graphic here, the gray box portion of these bar graphs depicts the impact on our mill rate from that 20-year note, from that building referendum that passed back in 2005. We're coming near to the end of that, and we as a district are currently, because of the debt deficiences that we talked about a few, a couple of months ago, we are positioned to pay off the remainder of that 20-year note and do it a little bit early. The way in which this works out with a financially neutral impact is we devised the base plan specifically around, you know, how much work could we do and try to keep the projected mill rate flat? And that's what the white box on this graphic is intended to depict. That essentially is how we're positioned to be able to do this with a neutral impact on the mill rate, is the proposed facility improvement work would essentially supplant what we're currently having in structure on the mill rate impact structure from the old referendum that we're due to finish paying off.
So you guys, you financial guys, correct me, but our thought process and the way we do this and the way we've traditionally done it, which is very similar, also gives us a good bond rating.
Yes, absolutely.
Which also influences the good financial planning that we're able to do in doing this. Am I saying this right? You guys?
Yes.
Okay.
That actually relates to what we were talking about before, about how we're positioned to get a pretty good interest rate on that 20-year note.
Right. It's because we're fiscally conservative, so we get a good bond rating historically.
Very good. So the last piece that I have before seeing if there are any additional questions is, this is a report out. This is all informational for the board to see a comprehensive report out of all of the planning that has been going on from the facility planning committee and the results of the community survey, which obviously suggests that there is support from, for the base plan that the committee has put together. I want to note for board members that in board docs under this agenda item, so we're under section seven, part A on the facility planning committee report, I did reach out with the assistance of elders to our legal counsel that helps us with facility and finance-related matters, and they drafted up a sample ballot question. And that is in board docs for the board members to review. Again, we're all informational at this point in time. The board has taken no action. But we did want the board to be able to have a view of what a sample question might look like if you were to decide to move forward with a ballot question for a facilities referendum. Now, if the board so chooses, the last opportunity we have in order to put a question like the sample one that you have to be able to view in board docs would be at our January board meeting. At this time, our recommendation would be to have an agenda item at the January board meeting with the potential of the board taking action to approve a ballot question like the sample one that you see here available for you to view in board docs. This is worded, as you'll see, currently with that 99.5 number, and it's drafted in such a way to outline a summary of what projects at the high school would look like, some renovation work at the middle school, as well as referencing the type of renovation work is at the elementary level. That's included in the base plan for the elementary level that Ryan stands presented
Any questions?
Just a comment, I guess, when anybody goes to a, any group, public entity goes to a referendum, a referendum then does give the public another, I don't want to kick it to the cat, probably isn't a good idea to say, but another chance to look at the proposal and to finalize their decision or their thought on what's going to happen at that point. So this is certainly not the be-all and end-all in terms of any more potential public input or reaction, I guess, on the whole situation. We've had positive results with our school referendum in the past, with the public supporting us, but this is another opportunity for us to put forward a plan to the public and then there's the vote.
The other thing that's important to note from a timing perspective is we're about to enter an odd numbered year, which means there is no fall election. If we, if the board were to choose not to move forward with a ballot question for April 11th, 2023, it'd be a year later, is the soonest next opportunity and a fiscal year later before you would be able to add a question again. That's next soonest opportunity.
And how we're looking at potentially a year or two down the line, possibly having to redo some of the types of things that are being planned right now. So again, it's important that I think we at least do move forward and get the question out there to the people.
Well, we had one referendum that did not pass.
Yeah, we did.
It was right before 9/11, so it's been 20, over 20 years ago. And we had a very reasonable amount in the referendum. And we had community members that wanted us to do it in smaller pieces at the time. And so that one did not pass. It was, it was close, but it didn't pass. And my reason for bringing this up is that then 9/11 happened. And oh my gosh, the cost of steel, the cost of all construction materials skyrocketed. It was similar to other things we've seen in recent years with kind of a building boom during COVID where prices went up. And so I am saying that as a word of caution because, you know, sometimes you think, well, if we do it this way or do it later, whatever, but experience has been, and not just from my point of view, but from everybody's point of view, that costs don't go down. Costs don't go down. So what you put off, you end up paying more for later if you don't do it when you have the opportunity.
Well, the other issue here is too, let's project forward, and I'm being a little, maybe assuming too much, but let's just assume that a referendum would pass. That work of $99 billion and all of these things that are being looked at aren't going to be done in a one year's time. Those things are also going to be scaled and put out for a variety of times as well. So that might be something further down the line that I'd want to see. Maybe it's too hard at this point, but to take a look at that and say, okay, if this goes, what might be the progression of some of these things in terms of, maybe you guys have looked at that already, I don't know, but I would like to hear the response to that.
That's after the conceptional stage. There's a part of the vision.
Right, I understand.
After the overdo.
Yeah, because you're talking about a lot of renovation work, and that's going to need to continue to be put to use. So you're talking about doing things in phases over a period of time.
Right, right. Right. I think the public knows, needs to know that down the line potentially as well as to when this is going to happen because of, or when it might happen, excuse me, might happen. I'm assuming way too much here. But we're often accused of not giving the public maybe enough information and as much as we can give them as possible. The word repair was also mentioned earlier, and again, I would like to echo with our gentlemen and ladies on the committee and what Ryan sure could echo as well. There's always been this thought that, well, we don't take care of what we have facilities here, and that's simply not true. There's been a lot of maintenance work that's allocated every single year. There's only a finite amount of money that we can look at each year, but this district does do its best it can to try to maintain what we have, as evidenced by, we've got facilities or we've got equipment from the 1960s that are still working. You don't do that without good maintenance and maintenance people. So. So enough lecture for me tonight, but I just want to get the help there.
Well, those things don't go away. They still need to be done, and they just cost a lot.
You can maintain a car for so long. Eventually, you know, you're going to keep driving.
I'm just going to add just one little bit from what Mark's description of the equipment, that we're kind of on borrowed time, would you say? And we're very blessed that things have been maintained well, but this is not going to, we're on borrowed time with such ancient equipment. Parts can't be, the public acquired or some of these things have to be jury-proofed to be maintained. So it's high time.
I just got one item to add, and we're going to get it late. But Dan, I got to add it with Jenny Frederick and her group. She meets quarterly with different businesses through a marshfield that are part of her committee, and they meet with all the tech ed teachers. And I'll tell you what, the tech ed teachers are like sponges with the business community because they know a lot of what we're teaching there is going to work for them, along with mid-state tech and other technical programs. And what they have come forward with, you know, to Dan, to the committee, to help build their end. And I'm going to tell you, I mean, we've got good, strong teachers all the way through. But I'm more the tech ed side. Them tech ed teachers, bar none, are some of the best I've ever seen. And we cannot hold them back from letting them do what they do best.
That falls in mind well with the fine-tune type work, fine-tuning work that Ryan Sands was referencing before is if this were to go with the expansion of that tech ed area, we need to get our business community in there to help us design what that room, what the layout should be, and what is the best way to teach, to continue to improve the programs to make our students' career ready right out of high school.
And that's a lot, honestly, what they have been doing already. So they'll continue, especially when they know we got, this would pass.
Thank you, Mrs. Sands. I'm just wondering, in the event that the referendum wouldn't pass with that type of dollar amount, have we looked at what a budget would be to repair and to remodel the areas that are absolutely necessary?
We haven't, I guess we haven't specifically packaged a budget around what that would be, but within the larger budget for all the projects that total up to the base plan of $99.5, we have that information in there. So if there were, you know, a package of projects, we could break pieces out to determine kind of what the cost for different pieces of it would be. We have the information, we just haven't, we don't have a list of what that would be and haven't kind of tallied up those specific items. So it's something we could do if needed.
And since there is a ceiling on the amount of borrowing in this referendum, do we have options available that we can, where we can adjust things so that we stay within the dollar amount that we are borrowing in the event that, God forbid, you know, inflation keeps going up and, you know, and interest rates keep going up? By the time, we would be ready to borrow?
Sure, I can see for that a little bit, and I guess I can answer your question as well on schedule, like just high level. So if the board chose to go to a referendum in April of '23 and it was successful in round, in round timeframes, design would take roughly a year from a whole thing. It might be, it would likely be less for certain aspects of it. But the budgets were built around bidding in spring of 2024. So then we would be able to start construction on certain aspects in summer of 2024. And the high school's schedule, for instance, right now is planned to span basically 15 months so that we're picking up two summers and the year in between. And so when you look at a project like the high school, absolutely it would be phased, and a lot of that would be around what can be done while we're keeping the building fully operational for students and staff. And so when we look at like which spaces might be in our first summer, it's usually those that aren't changing function. So, you know, if we're taking an art room and we're updating it and providing new storage and whatever, you know, might go in there, and it's staying in art room, we could do that in the first summer because it's going to function the same the following school year. First spaces where we're changing the function, those would likely push to the second summer unless we can figure out a way to kind of have a trickle-down because we need to make sure you have all the right spaces to educate kids throughout that school year. The additions take longer, so those would likely start, you know, break ground in the spring, and we'd have to phase them in a way that we can provide all the right access and things that are needed to keep the building operational. So that kind of gives the overall rate design for approximately a year, and then construction for, you know, kind of 15 months is what we're projecting in the high school. Other projects at the elementaries and the middle school would be less time duration for both of those phases. And so we work that schedule out. So to answer your question about, you know, if things came in high, we are accounting for some inflation within the budget to account for the fact that we are not bidding it in theory until 2024. There is a couple of different contingencies included in the budget. So you always want to go into a project, especially one as messy, so to speak, as an addition renovation office of the high school, with a construction contingency. And so that accounts for the unknown things going in. So that might be unsuitable soils. We'll do soil borings to try to get a picture of what's below the surface, but you aren't, you know, you weren't able to test every square inch of soil before. So the boring might be here, and the soil might be great, and 15 feet away, it's bad. And so there's always the potential that you hit something like that that you just can't predict until you get into the ground. So that's one thing that contingency is often used for. Then another thing on a renovation project is we have to rely on existing building drawings for as much as we can as far as what's in walls, what's in chases, what's in the spaces you can't see. And so there's always things that come up in a renovation that are unforeseen as well. So you want to carry a contingency to account for those things. And then at this early stage, like I said before, this is very conceptual. So there's also a design and estimating contingency built in that accounts for the unknowns. You know, we haven't talked to staff in as much detail as we will, and so there might be things that would adjust and shift slightly. And so those things, along with just the same type of effort that we'll go through to try to build the middle school plumbing into the base plan, is sharpening your pencils. You know, there's different levels of, you know, quality of different products and finishes and things that we can look at. And there's always efforts to maximize your investment while saving on pleasure.
So essentially, what we're talking about is we're not even, we're not even willing to bid the majority of this project until about a year and a half from now?
Yeah, I mean, there may be, there may be things as we get into the design further that, right now, there are a number of things in the industry that have long lead times because of availability. So there may be some things that we need to issue as an early package to try to get ahead of those long lead times. And there may be things, just from a phasing standpoint, that we would look at. But yeah, in general, that would be the timeframe, would be spring of 2024.
Kathy, did I understand your question correctly was if it didn't pass, what would be the necessary things we would move forward with? If we had to go to referendum a whole nother spring later? So instead of the spring of 2023, it would be spring of 2024? Is that the question?
My question is, if the referendum doesn't pass, do we have an alternate dollar amount that we can, that we can focus on and a plan to present for doing all of the necessary things?
Well, and that would be a whole year later.
It would be a whole year later, probably.
And so I, again, I am open to correction, especially the construction guys, because, so my understanding and my experience is that if we wait a whole nother year and we have that necessary list, there are three things that drive up costs within that year. One, maybe interest rates. But another may be the materials cost. And the third, well, and the cost of the labor. But the other one is also the cost of, that adds on if you can't interface projects. In other words, if you split them up, if you can do more projects at one time and interface the crews onsite, you get more done for less money. Am I saying this right? Well, if you can't do that, it costs more to bring them in to do this and then bring them back another year or two later. So that's another added cost. So it's not just the interest rate and the materials, but it's also the, using the opportunity to interface, all of which we experienced 20, 27 years ago, but we didn't take advantage of that. We had the public asking us why this was costing so much more to do later, and we were having to try and explain that to them because it didn't happen at the lower cost that we could have done for that time. Did I say that right?
I don't know, because I don't know what you were trying to get across.
It's bulk purchasing. We're doing bulk purchasing. You will get more for your buck if you're doing bulk purchasing. And that's kind of how I'm going to simplify it.
I think Kathy's main point that I took from it, and I'll paraphrase, but it's, if we do not get the big referendum passed, the electrical, the plumbing, the HVAC are things that we see as failures soon. What are those going to cost that we have to fix?
And can we do that?
Whether we say yes, whether we say yes or no to that, if something goes out in the MCC, which is the control center, we can't get parts, here we sit for six months waiting to figure out how we're going to get that back online or HVAC. So those are things, I like to equate it, if you've got your car and your fuel line breaks, you replace the fuel line, but you've still got a 60-year-old car. But you've got to replace your fuel line. That's what we would do if we just fixed the electrical, the plumbing. We've still got an old car, but we just fixed the fuel line. And that's what we've done.
If the referendum went down, is there a ability to fix some of the must-haves without waiting a year?
It depends on what happens.
Yeah.
Or like, we can't preemptively replace things? We have to wait till they break?
And my concern is that are we going to be stuck sitting there for two more years without getting what we have to get fixed to stay operating?
Exactly.
And that, and I understand the concept of, you know, doing, doing a whole project. But sometimes...
No, it's a very good point to illustrate. It's, and your question does bring that up, that if we're not going to take the, if it doesn't pass, it will put us in a situation of exactly that, waiting and wondering, and how are we going, and doing stopgap measures to repair when we don't even have the funding available to do that? You know, I mean, it's more costly to borrow in an emergency situation.
Just a couple of things that I, you know, I guess I want to come back to. The base plan is the result of the work that the committee did and what they're proposing and recommending, and what our financials suggest that we can do. And then we did a community survey that we have results telling us that it seems that they will support. If the survey would have come back not supporting that base plan, I think we might be reevaluating and reviewing more along the lines of some of what all of you are bringing up.
We've got a good pulse on what the community is willing to do.
Yeah. I think the thing to understand with Ryan's part of getting the plans done, a year pro, for them to do it in a year's time is very normal. That's generally the time it takes. And the MECS, the mechanicals, are the biggest part for them to get completed, which is the biggest part of this repair stuff, is getting somebody involved in the mechanicals. And that's, that's the electrical and HVAC and all that. So that's, that brick and mortar is easy. And I'll say that from a design aspect, it's the mechanical center, very complicated.
And a lot of that, you know, if you've got to piece it up, if he gets that plan done, it'll be nice if something does fail in that timeframe. Take a look at it, okay, what else is it going to serve? So how large would it have to be, or how small? You know, getting it sized right, so where you don't put a piece of equipment in there, Ryan will know, oh, that's all wrong. Because that plan is going to be key to us no matter what.
And Ryan, I know you mentioned, as we were talking about this, that the results that we got from the survey really kind of align well with our success rate for our past referendum. That is, the community has supported referendum at about that rate, and it appears that the opinion, opinions from this survey indicate that the committee is at that same rate of approval that we have had in the past with the referendum.
Yeah, what you're referring to, Sam, is that weighted figure, which was about 58.8% from the report that Rob did from School Perceptions. That's almost the exact same pass rate or yes vote in the fall 2020 referendum question.
Okay, anything else? Then we will thank you so much.
Thank you, Ryan. You're welcome.
And thank you to all our committee members that came. We're willing to be here to support the committee in writing.
Have a safe trip.
Thank you, everyone. We will move on to the superintendent's.
Yeah, we're going to be quick with this because we had a long report just before this. I just want to note, it's hard to believe that we're coming up on Christmas time of year. But winter break is right around the corner for us. I just want to make a specific note that winter break for students and staff runs from December 23rd through January 1st. And also note that our district office here will be closed during that time period at the same time that our schools are closed. That's next week, Thursday, is our last day before winter break begins. It's hard to believe we're there. And then I would just also note that on behalf of the school district marshfield, we wish everyone a safe and happy holiday season. Thank you.
And then we have, yes, and we are always so blessed. And today, we have school supplies valued at $1,000 from Walmart. And I'm realizing, are all of our mics still off? Do you want to turn them on?
No, they're definitely not.
Okay. And so school supplies valued at $1,000 from Walmart. At Grant Elementary, there are donations of the school supplies valued at $175 from Pick 'n Save. Items for Veterans Day program valued at $207.19 from Wisconsin Homes. For Madison Elementary, there were donations of coloring books, small toys valued at $30[1707.05] dollars from Sandy Hill. A hundred dollars towards holiday baskets from Steve and Connie Timmerman. Ten boxes of cheese valued at three hundred dollars for holiday baskets from Ryan and Amanda Hyman. Twelve turkeys valued at two hundred and fifty dollars from Eric and Tracy Jonas. And then for Lincoln Elementary, classroom snacks valued at seventy-five dollars from Cornerstone Community Church. Items for the school store valued at two hundred and twenty dollars. Items for the school store valued at sixty dollars from Ryan and Andrea McGaver. At the middle school, five hundred dollars for classroom activities for the personalized pathways program and supplies for their basement brew coffee shop from Merlin and Jean Denk through Treven. And at the high school, two thousand dollars for the girls' soccer uniforms. Eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-five cents for boys' soccer uniforms. Three thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars for boys' basketball uniforms. Track board updates valued at eighty dollars and seventy-five cents. A hundred and eighty-one dollars and seventy-five cents for wrestling dues from the Booster Club. And two hundred and seventy-five dollars for volleyball conference champ t-shirts from the Marshfield Tiger Booster Club. So all of that that I just said is from the Booster Club.
And I can see where you, because like it does address with the coach, like if the coach showing move from competition or practice any student that they think is showing symptoms of a head injury, but there's no mention of, and they should also contact the parent or something like that, I think is what we're.
This policy is specifically regarding statute on concussion protocol with athletics. And this is updated. This is on the list of updates because sudden cardiac arrest has been added.
Correct.
That's the only reason why this policy is up for an update is, is that sudden cardiac arrest piece, which is because the statute changed this last spring.
And this has come up before where I've brought questions forward, like because I think what I'm, what I'm understanding is that if it, it doesn't have to be everything in policy explicitly written out, how it functions in reality in the building.
The policy is, is the generality, and then there's, then there's the function that is done at the building level.
The statute requirements.
Yes.
It's a statute requirement. That's why it's here in policy.
Like disciplinary stuff are missing or being taken away, have your privileges taken away. That's not in policy, but it happens in practice.
There are protocols for that, but that's not what, what policy, policy is, is to be aligned with the state statute, and it's not, it's not an operational manual.
I understand it's not an operational manual, but if we have policies regarding illnesses and accidents, accidents with students, do we have something in our policy that indicates that the parent will be notified in a, in a timely manner? I mean, I think that's important. I think it's an important thing to have in a policy because if it's, if somebody decides to take it out of an administrative manual or something, we're not going to know about it. But we do know that we have a policy that we, that we can enforce.
So somewhere.
It's up here.
It's right at the top.
It's right at the top.
Just cover said responsibilities.
Notification of parents.
Summoning of medicals. Notification of administration, parents, and filing of accident reports.
Under the, the other policy in here, the student supervision and welfare policies, we've got three of those. And those, trying to remember what I read there, they say that there has to be an accident report, and then I, I'm almost positive that when there's an incident or accident report that the person on the contact, the emergency contact card is also notified it's been in practice because those policies require that instant report or accident report. So whenever that is filled out, before it's filled out, whoever's on that contact card is always called. So I, I mean, here's an example. We did go down the slide at an elementary school with their legs out, and so one of the legs hit another kid that was standing out on the ground next to the slide. Well, they called the parent for the kid on the ground just because they wrote up that instant report, even though they weren't severely hurt. They'd been kicked by the kid going down the slide with their legs out, and they get the phone call. So that's under the supervision one separate.
And we, and we've got, and the first paragraph covers that, and like I said, I don't think this isn't an operational manual. We don't list every detail of what, of what is involved in notifying the parents, but notification of parents is part of the responsibilities that are.
That's handled in as timely a manner as possible. I've, I've just pulled up a real life example that occurred this week at an elementary building. We have an accident report system and, and, you know, reading from the, I can read right here from the report, it says mother notified by phone after the accident occurred. And then again, when, after bruising and swelling began to become noticed. So I mean, that's the case where parents were called twice with one, and this is one, you know, two kids running around a corner and bonking heads on the playground at an elementary school. So all of that is documented in the accident reports that we keep a record of.
And I under, I understand that, but it doesn't say that they have to notify the parent right away. It, it says that they have to do a notification of the parent. Doesn't say right away. Doesn't give you a, you know, as soon as feasible.
How about, how about we put this into policy, into policy, we'll talk about it at our committee meeting next week. That's when we would make those decisions. So thank you for bringing that up. We'll, we'll talk about it next week. Okay, anything else?
Okay, then we will move on to finance.
And mostly it was just a rundown of the audit, the annual audit results. So we got nice summary financial reports. I think y'all heard it. The upshot is we did very well again. The auditors submitted an unmodified and clean opinion about our financial statements. They found that our statements present fairly in all material respects, the financial activity of the district. Our cash and investments increased by two point two million dollars and change. We spent six point three twenty-six million dollars on general fixed assets, increasing our fixed assets to fifty-one million forty-eight thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. At the end of, at the year end, seven million seventy thousand of general obligation debt was outstanding, which is well below our district state statute debt limit of two hundred and fifty-six million, et cetera, et cetera. And the auditor's reports on compliance and internal control over financial reporting. Those reports concluded that the district's internal controls appear adequate for a district of our size. And then the final section, which was communications with those charged with evidence. This report discusses the scope and limitations of a financial audit and communicates any problems we had during the audit process. No significant problems were identified. Additional points were brought up for clarification during the meeting and clarified, and again reiterated that there were no significant or material concerns with anything that they reviewed regarding our financials. And so debts went down and our balance sheet is up more positive than last year, and we've done a good job taking care of the money. And that was it for finance.
Any questions for Karen regarding the audit?
Gosh, I hope not, because the guy who can answer those questions is here.
Employee relations did nothing, and neither did facility, safety and transportation.
Did not meet.
And neither did curriculum and instruction. So now we will move on to approval of retirements, and I believe we have a couple of those.
We've got a couple of people that's in a request here coming up at the end of the year, calendar year.
And those people are Melissa Franklin, food service worker at the middle school, and Kathleen Frye, teacher assistant, regular education at Grant School. I move as an individual board member, meeting that we approve and accept their request for retirement.
Second, I say Steiner. Any questions or comments regarding those? Okay, then we'll take the phone.
Mr. Yipias.
Yes.
Mr. Dean.
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan.
Yes.
Mr. Kenrady.
Yes.
Dr. Schulman.
Yes.
Ms. Horst.
Yes.
And then I believe we have a resignation.
I would, as an individual board member, I guess I would put forward a motion that we approve the resignation of Colin Cowell, C O W E L L, teacher assistant, library media at Madison School.
I'll let you choose, Jenny, and see their.
And any questions or comments?
Then we'll go ahead and take the phone.
Mr. Dean.
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan.
Yes.
Mr. Kenrady.
Yes.
Dr. Schulman.
Yes.
Ms. Horst.
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner.
Yes.
Mr. Yipias.
Yes.
And next we have approval of, potential approval of a couple of student trips. The first one is travel to Decorah, Iowa for the Dorian Vocal Festival, and I believe that's that first weekend of January. Hopefully you've had a chance to look at those. And what is your desire regarding approval of the trip to the Dorian?
I just have a couple of questions.
Everyone else, first, I move to you.
Thank you, and we have a second. Thank you. So this time we have Mark and Dan for a second. Okay, now, question?
No, I have a question. I'm concerned that this is an overnight trip, and I, we don't know the, the collection of students, male versus female, and we have only a male chaperone. So that's just a concern I have.
Well, I did note in reading it that they're staying at the school.
There's a dorm.
And they're in the dorm, and that is.
I see. So there's going to be then, then the Lutheran Cotton Fur College staff will be supervising?
There's numbers that consider attending this from schools all over the place. What you're describing with small numbers, though, Sam, keep in mind is that's happened before.
Okay, I just wasn't sure about that.
Situations do come up when we have small numbers of students traveling.
Okay.
So we may not specifically have supervision for one of the sexes.
But with the, that's, my question was.
Could there be proxy supervision? The girls dorm will have.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. I just wanted to.
Any other questions?
Could we access these requests a little bit earlier than one month before they're happening?
Mr. Steiner is going to work on it.
Yeah, I don't know how soon the availability of this, you know, became where the teacher, but this is a first-year teacher.
That's my thought, yeah.
So we'll work on that.
Something to grow.
New to the district, I should say.
Yes, an opportunity for growth.
This is, oh, he's, oh, where he used to teach. So this is a new festival for our kids to be going to?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't think I'd seen this before.
It says that he's taken kids before.
Right, but our kids have never gone.
That's nice, an opportunity for them.
That explains a lot.
Any other questions? Then we'll go ahead and take the phone.
Mrs. Bohan.
Yes.
Mr. Kenrady.
Yes.
Dr. Schulman.
Yes.
Ms. Horst.
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner.
Yes.
Mr. Yipias.
Yes.
Mr. Dean.
Yes.
And the second trip is one to Milwaukee for the Regional Science Bowl.
So move, accept.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay. And that one are both Dean McPartlin and Paul Harder have done this for years. And that's at a hotel. And I got, not for this trip, but I've gone on one trip for a different group, and, you know, we did vet checks in that hotel room. We got boys and girls, and you did the vet checks, and that Milwaukee in the morning at a certain time and that sort of thing. So I know that's helping.
Have we had tryouts yet, or is it next week? Since it's right before winter break, because they don't know whether they're sending five or getting to send ten. I don't know if five, but they might be able to send two teams.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then we'll take the phone.
Okay, Mr. Kenrady.
Yes.
Dr. Schulman.
Yes.
Ms. Horst.
Yes.
Mrs. Steiner.
Yes.
Mr. Yipias.
Yes.
Mr. Dean.
Yes.
Mrs. Bohan.
Yes.
And then.
I move to you.
Well, before you, can I just bring up a future agenda item?
Sure.
Okay. And that is regarding the resolutions for the WASB convention in January. There are several ways we can review them and give guidance to our delegate, which will be Dr. Schulman. So I am open to someone making a suggestion. It could be through policy committee, it could be the whole board doing it at the next executive session, or it could be delegating it to a couple of administrators and board members to look at.
I would like to just share how the process has gone for the past two years, which is that I, as the delegate, received the resolutions, reviewed them, I reviewed them with Ryan and our business manager, Matt, and was given guidance on some of those issues there. Then if there was, for instance, you guided me that as a delegate who is designated by the board, that is also designating trust in my ability to, to present the votes and to, and to make the judgments on the votes. I felt like I needed to ask questions for some of those resolutions to make sure that the board, we were all on board because it could go either way. And so I, as a delegate, made that choice to present those, and I think we did do it at executive session. So I would like to propose that that was a very efficient way. I think, I don't know what other board members feel about that in the years past, if you felt like you were adequately represented and through that, that your opinions were represented well through that process. So I'd like to propose that we do that again.
At executives.
At executive session.
Okay.
At the discretion of the delegate as to whether we need, and, yeah, we read through them and I, I wasn't.
How many resolutions are we talking about?
Ten, one time. Sometimes there's.
So what the packet includes is, so there is a committee at the state level, we take someone from CISA, they represent our CISA, and so there's someone from each level or someone representing each CISA. And basically, they recommend some of these, and then they don't recommend some. So we can just go through the recommended ones that are going to be on the floor. The others don't get brought up unless a majority of the delegates vote to bring them to the floor. The recommended ones automatically come to the floor. So how many do we have?
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
And then this packet of resolutions submitted by school boards, or other school districts, I think is what you're referring to, whether they're going to make it to the floor. There are fifty, five zero.
Right. But not all of them are going to, are recommended from, by the review group at the state level. In the past, we've just looked at ones that were recommended, just because those definitely come to the floor.
Twenty twenty-three.
I'm sorry.
The proposed twenty twenty-three.
How many of those are there? That's another one you said.
They're nineteen.
Nineteen. And, and the only other, just so people understand procedurally, even though we give guidance and so hopefully our delegate understands our rationale also, sometimes there are amendments brought to the floor, or our delegate could bring an amendment to the floor also if we educate that that might be a possibility. But amendment brought by another school district might address whatever our concern was. So if she sees that that was addressed and that amendment passed, it might change the vote.
And also, it is very instructive to be a delegate at the delegate discussion, at the assembly, because there are clarifications that we can't anticipate. And then, you know, we might change the vote because we learn more about the impact, or you're hearing other districts talking about the impact that this particular resolution could have. And, and that is also, you know, part of what we do. We make, we make that, we are being entrusted by our board to be, to be our, our representative there and to take in the information that comes forth in the discussion after district assembly, which can change your, your, your vote. I mean, I, I, that definitely happened with me as I recognized, oh, wait, now I understand this better, that, and I, and I, I, I know my board and I know that we.
The rationale.
Yeah, what the rationale is, yeah.
The actions.
Yeah. I mean, there, there were some, yeah, last year, no, there were some that I really felt I needed to just bring to the board, say, guys, what do you. board, say, guys, what do you think? You know, because I don't want to be making that decision myself. But that's what the delegate does.
At this point, is everyone comfortable with just doing it at executive session?
So, essentially, what you're saying is that we would review that executive session and indicate the direction that we would like to see things go?
I would like to meet with maybe Sam and Ryan ahead of time, so I get a handle on it, and then come to exec, and then we can hash it out, come to executive session. I mean, everybody could get a copy of them, I think, too, ahead of time to read through. And then, if there's anything that we feel specifically pertinent to our district, and bring that to you guys and see how, if, if there was anything that, you know, we might think was contentious, or we could weigh in on. So, I know what you're saying. When is our, when's our meeting in January, though?
Eighteenth to twenty.
No, that's his meeting, five hours, the week before.
Is the date before.
The week before, okay.
Yes, the week before. Yeah, that's the second.
I feel that could work. We could meet sometime in the next couple of weeks over, and you can come to Adam President.
And then have it on an agenda for the eleventh, is what I'm hearing.
Yes.
Now, the only thing I'll add about doing it executive versus the regular board meeting is, this could take five minutes, and it could take fifty-five minutes. So.
Let's book an hour.
It might be better to actually do it during the regular board meeting than what it's going to take.
Yeah.
I guess the end of the regular board meeting.
Any of these things are down, like, some done, I think.
Kind of aspirational, as far as I can tell. A lot of, a lot of the resolutions are, are sort of, this is where we would like things to go. This is sort of a, here's the climate that we would like to create.
All I know is I read some of the questions years ago. They were so frickin' ridiculous. You know, it, it, you couldn't even believe that anybody even wrote them, you know? So, I mean, some of this is hard for me to comprehend, because I know where it's going to end up, you know?
And, and I have some guiding principles that guide me on those, because I don't like a Swiss cheese approach where it helps out some school districts, it doesn't help others. And there was one about financing the change in, in logos for school districts that had the DM type logos. Well, a bunch of them had already changed their logos at their own great expense, so why are we supporting a few or, that should be a local decision, local thing, you know? So, I'm all for local on some of that stuff.
They basically boil down to position statements for WASB.
And, and the only, there's, we have never presented a resolution, I years, on the board, and the only one that's come to my mind isn't a resolution, it's a change to the. Before the resolutions, the, in other words, it's, I'm sorry, my mind blanked. But that's the thought, that instead of things having to pass by the majority, that maybe it should be sixty percent or something. And that's only because there've been some issues over the years where it's been very close, like forty-eight, fifty-two. And in my mind, if they're lobbying on our behalf, they shouldn't be lobbying against half of the school districts they represent. So, I did.
And you should write a resolution.
Well, it's not a resolution, it's a.
I'm stopping.
We have to pass by a big majority of.
A supermajor.
Do they have bylaws?
Bylaws, they have. It's a change to the bylaws, so it has to have a bigger pass rate. But, you know, that's the, but I did ask the guys that work for WASB, how they handle that, if they've got a real close, you know, passage rate. And they said that pretty much with the legislators, they don't push too hard on those, or they let them know what the passage rate was at the convention, you know? So, then I didn't worry about it as much. But if it's a controversial topic, you shouldn't be lobbying against half of your membership. That's my thought.
So, in conclusion, then, can we, we've got a plan for how we're going to, or we'll circulate.
Can you send a copy of this?
Yeah, scan this and put it in board docs attached to that.
So, we can look at that, and we'll put it on a regular, the regular board meeting agenda, and we will have discussion at that point.
Sounds good. So, now, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
You're the first, right?
I move to adjourn.
Dan.
Name you right down.
And all on paper, sir.
Dan, Sam, and Karen.
Yes.
We'll talk about policy.
Okay, sure.
Oh, timing.
Yes, and so where we stand in convention is Kathy, Karen, Frances, and Dan.
Yes, that's it.
That's my intention. Smart bailout.